Any other?
I just have a couple grammatical errors.
If no other questions, I'll motion to approve.
I may motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Transit report, Mr. Goble.
Thank you. The total consolidated assets of the town of Washington is of $831,000. 2018 was $461,395.60. Washington Water Works consolidated assets were $14,894.16. And the wastewater assets were $4,005.28 and $81.00. August usage, we pumped 817,000 gallons backwash, 17,500 gallons given as 799,500 billable gallons. We billed 723,331 gallons. We sold 15,000 gallons. That leaves us with 61,169 gallons that have been treated but not yet billed. So the income for the town of Washington, August 2018 was $23,978.38. In that same time, the Washington Water Works incomes were $14,751.17. And the wastewater income was $11,891.54. The tax, are there bills to be paid and the additional bills to be paid? I think on the additional bills to be paid, we had a cost of $159.94. That was for the mums that are in the planters out there for the fall. And I don't think there's anything really unusual or unexpected. Our B&amp;B insurance program, quarterly payment, $8,688.76. That's a standard quarterly payment. Other than that, that is all I have today.
Any questions? If none, I'll motion to approve.
I think that's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Planning Commission, Mr. Cattell?
Planning Commission had a meeting, a joint meeting with the Housing Task Force at November, excuse me, August 27th. At that time, the Housing Task Force had been working on, one of the main things that they had been wanting to do was develop a Planned Unit Development Ordinance, a PUD. They brought the preliminary draft PUD to the Planning Commission. And members of the Planning Commission, members of the Housing Task Force worked on it at the meeting on the 27th. At the end of that meeting, several decisions had been made. The first decision was to have some learned consultants give their perspective on it. One, of course, is the gentleman to my right, Mr. Bennett, as well as John McCarthy, who many of you know, is the former zoning administrator and county executive for the Rappahannock County, as well as William Silberberg, who was the former director of planning for the County of Altonville for many, many years. Those people are in process, have received the draft of the PUD ordinance to review. We will receive their comments and incorporate them into a final PUD ordinance at the Planning Commission meeting on September 24th. It is our hope then to present a final PUD ordinance to the town council for them to consider whether it should have a public meeting and public review and discussion at the town council's November 12th meeting. November. We will bring in the document, the final document that has gone through, that will form the Planning Commission. This is our intent at the October meeting, at which the town council then can decide to have it come up in November in a public meeting, since it is an ordinance.
Public hearings?
Public hearings.
And you'll distribute the copy prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, folks on October, August?
I want to ask members of the audience who are on the Housing Task Force and the Planning Commission, is there anything that I failed to add or this? Okay. Good sign, they're all shaking their heads.
I would just say one thing, Fred. I think this engages the item in the new business.
Yes.
So that can be supplied.
Yeah. We do not have a draft to present this.
ARB, anything else on October?
Yes.
ARB is having a meeting, is it this Wednesday, Paul?
Yes.
To review a proposal by the new owners of what was the Hoggus property. And just make the comment, I'm delighted that new owners are God-fearing. Jeanne Kaufman, who we lived nearby on Close Road for many, many years, they lived here in the county for a long, long time. They're delightful people, they'll be a great addition to the town. And trust will get involved when there is one. It'll be full-time value. Mr. Bennett?
I'd like to talk a little bit about this B&amp;B bill, must go by that.
Yeah?
I'm not sure exactly what it means. Because it's my view that governments had the authority to authorize that in the first place. And the only, is there some technical reason that it could be an advantage for the health department or rule regulations in a restaurant or something along those lines by explicitly saying that B&amp;B can serve all meals?
Don't leave me in that.
That...
So this is a law that went into effect or is this a considered law?
It's considered.
I'm sorry, it's what?
It's in effect.
Which, just to remind or go back and refresh me to it, says that a B&amp;B can serve meals to any time of day, or three meals a day. And to people, guests and non-guests? Does it say that?
It's only to the guests that they have, um, to 16. And you don't have to have a commercial kitchen. But if you don't have a commercial kitchen, you have to post that you're not inspected by the health department.
Does that mean anything? Is it right anymore?
It's a huge thing because it was very restrictive before where B&amp;Bs could only serve breakfast to their guests and no more than 10.
Yes, so that, that must be, it doesn't matter, like you said, that way, but it relaxes those technical requirements for the kitchen.
This is also, we, this has come up many, many times when people have requested to serve some meals and stuff. Is that a weak point or did it need to change our ordinance, isn't it?
What was the question?
It's, it's a legislative decision. I think councils have that authority all along. But it was prohibitive in that the cost of the kitchen wouldn't be able to support.
Right now, the ordinance is in conflict, I guess, with the new law.
So it's just nailing legislation, let's say you have to do it, this is a nailing legislation. So the town could do it, town could not do it.
But does the state legislation, since you just went now applaud? Does the state legislation now applaud in order?
Yes. I mean, no, it does not make it, gives localities the authority to adopt the ordinance and provide that meals may be served, all meals may be served at B&amp;Bs, not to seat 16.
So we would have to vote in order that to go into effect here?
Yes.
Just to be clear, what I said to you, does it really matter, like, in our ticket? I was referring to, does it really matter if the health department has a sign up saying this place has to check up? I didn't mean, does this whole issue matter?
I talked to Med again and I asked her to double-check all this with the health department. And she said she double-checked with the district's standardization officer and she confirms that as long as the establishment is in compliance with the other criteria listed in that bulletin on B&amp;B changes, they can serve any meal to their guests only and are not required to have a commercial kitchen. They are required to post notices per the reference code section, that the kitchen is not inspected by the health department.
But that was my question, so if there's a notice posted, does that actually mean anything?
Well...
It's not inspected. Now, people can still come and eat if they want to.
Right.
You're not breaking the law. Question?
Yes.
Well, probably they're not inspected, you just don't have to sign them, so nobody will be questioning it.
I mean, but mostly, I guess, if you post a notice in the kitchen, if you post a guest in, you can go in the kitchen.
We had all inspection.
True?
Yeah, we've had all inspection for B&amp;B. So did we.
Or somebody actually came?
Yeah.
Med?
No, I've never had one.
Were you the last?
But I haven't liked it. She's come socially just now.
So we need to think about whether we want to be in sync with that, say, legislation things to me.
I could reach out to the Ben and Breakfast Association of Virginia and see how they're dealing with this.
That's fine, I'll send more.
I think the ones we've approved are when they were going to have people coming that were not necessarily guests of the B&amp;B too. And they're going to feel like, hey, it's for people that don't stay in there.
The ordinance says that you can serve meals to guests and not guests, but in no greater number of each meal seating than the number of permitted rooms times two. And does require an health department approval.
Which becomes 16, right? A maximum of 16.
I need more homework.
Yeah. Maybe it's more difficult.
I mean, John, what's your, I mean, let's put this way, let's say, right this very minute we decided, which we're not going to, I don't think, that we should change our ordinance to be in sync with that. What would be involved in that?
You'd have to draft an ordinance, come before council, council would authorize a public hearing to advertise, and if advertised, you're tempted to consider and possibly adopt the ordinance in a whole public hearing and take a vote. Majority of the forum would stand.
The Planning Commission is not involved in that?
Not on, not on this particular type of ordinance, I don't believe. But required and advised of two different things. There's nothing prohibited from the council from before you to the Planning Commission. My, my big question is, I think it'd be very helpful to see how it could help benefit the businesses that are here, give them the exact read what to do. And what would be, you know, at what level would be necessary to adopt an ordinance, how to kind of keep proceeding.
Well, I'm curious, without committee oneself, Jew, is somebody of interest you are, or don't you know?
I mean, it doesn't have a lot of, too much to avoid to see where the dust, so the ability to offer a lunch and a dinner. Breakfast at this point is our capacity in our business model. But I could see other folks maybe being incentivized by that, the concern being lots of restaurants that potentially emerging out of the B&amp;Bs or the potential for.
Former owner of the gay student?
Two things. One, as far as process, there are a number of specific exemptions, special use permits are out there. And I would be concerned about how a new ordinance retroactively changes the restrictions that were put in place on people. I would think neighbors would also raise that question. So among your things that you're checking on is what would be the process to review the special use permits that weren't very specifically restricted to so many at breakfast only? And then modify that to be in sync with, could you do it generally through, this will be applied retro? I don't think you can. So anyway, that's a process question. As far as whether it would benefit, we had a number of people through the years who wanted to come and do three or four day seminars. We had some business people who wanted to bring a small group out, we had people who wanted to come and do flower groups and all the rest. One of their problems was, could we serve them dinner or lunch? They didn't mind having people going out for one of those meals each day. But the, the deal breaker was when we said, no, we could only do breakfast, we can't serve you lunch or dinner here, well then we're not coming. So that is one thing. It might improve midweek visitation to the town. And if they served one of those meals, that would mean probably someone else in town is picking up the other meal, like to those of the cafe. So I think there are some reasons why it might be beneficial. The flip side of that was when we had unwelcome guests who were insisting that we feed them another meal, we could say, oh, we can't possibly do that, that would be in violation of our special use permit. So it plays both ways. I do believe, though, that there would be business opportunities that would be good for the B&amp;B owners as well as others in town if we could increase overnight guests midweek, especially in low season, where you might be able to say a package for poetry readers or, I don't know. Groups that want to come out, you know, six, eight people, several rooms, and spend three or four days. That, I think, would be worth looking at.
Little Washington is a national conference in there.
Right.
All right. Well, I just need to think about it, do some more homework. Let me, before getting into old business, let me say something about social studies. One, I really want to congratulate Patrick and his entire team for an incredible event in stock eight days ago, seven days, whatever it was. It really was extraordinary. And people sort of asking, how did it go on that? Never, except for when the Eagles won the Super Bowl last year, I'm not sure I've seen a thousand people so joyful and totally happy as they were at your event.
And all getting along?
And all getting along.
We thank Cher.
She was it. Let's get Cher back here. She was the hit, but it really was fabulous. A second and less pleasant, I mean, everybody knows the post office are going to leave town. I think that is, say at least, we're disappointed and frustrated and somewhat angry about it. I want to thank Jerry Martin, who, who offered his building as a location for the post office. And he delayed other choices that he had in order to try and get the post office in town. Butch Sendell did an incredible amount of work representing Jerry. John Ayerson was extremely helpful in this process. But at the end of the day, they're late. And I must say, we, it doesn't matter now, but we thought we were in a pretty good position. But that turned out not to be the case. Anyone's got any questions about process or anything about it, I'm happy to discuss it. Yeah?
Where are they moving to?
Well, your question is interesting. Anyway, I said that, let's definitely say something else. Jimmy Burke has a land that he owns adjacent to the bank on Bank Road. Jimmy is going to, assuming they complete a deal, it's not a complete deal, Jimmy is going to put up a brand new building, which I'm sure will have an emphasis on being functional. And they will be located there. A location there, although that's commercial area and that's designed for such places to be, there's some interesting issues that are involved locating there. If the public and the county focus on those, we'll see, I think there might be some questions. Now, a very practical question is, turning down the self-interested practical, is the post office going to deliver the mail to the people here in Washington, the county government, businesses and residents? And I don't know the answer to that. We've had a hint from somebody who's important says they probably would, but then he says not up to him, so don't know. John McCaslin slash Rappahannock News is reporting on this subject, doing an article this week. And as of, as of about 3 o'clock, emphasize, as of about 3 o'clock, the powers that be at the post office were not being receptive to talking to him, made a change. The gentleman with whom we dealt, Mr. Handcock, who started off saying that he was going to be largely the decision maker, is now taking a position, the decisions were made at levels above his pay grade and was really not terribly involved in it, which is somewhat different than the original. So we don't really know what happened. Somewhere up the chain, decision got made. When do they, when is this building going to be finished? When do they move? I don't know, but all I know is they got to go through a lot of processes to actually get the thing done, bill it, what happened. So they're going to be around for some time on this, this and all.
John, that's the spot where those junk cars were, right?
Not literally where the junk cars are, but behind.
Behind.
As I understand it.
It involves that property.
It involves that property, but behind, where the junk cars, I don't believe Jimmy owns that, I think my, my knowledge. So what will happen is that all of the trucks that they love to emphasize, the tractor trailers and trucks and this and that, to get to that new post office, will be traveling west on 211, turning left into Schoolhouse Road. Sometimes while buses are going in and out and cops are there and what have you, then they do a U-turn and turn back to the bank, just as one does now. To get, to get this way to be just as if you're going back. And I think, I guess I would say, when people focus on where it's going, I think there's going to be some questions. It's gone.
I also question, I don't have any knowledge of this, but there also seems to have been a process for the post office over the last 10 to 15 years of consolidating post offices. And I wonder if this is a veiled opportunity for them to be considering designing a brand new facility and then consolidating some of the branch post offices around the county. And I am sorry if our efforts fail and that does indeed occur to our neighbors.
Well, if you have a brand new facility somewhere between town of Washington and Sperryville, you know, good management might suggest you consolidate. But no, it's gone.
John?
Yeah, right.
On the subject of how the town folks will get their mail, it was suggested, I won't give my source, but that one of the, one of the things they would consider is what you see if you drive out into any of these new subdivisions and you'll see a row of aluminum boxes.
Yeah.
You know, eight or 10 or however. And I think we should disabuse them of that being an alternative for an historic district, that they're going to have to come up with a better solution. Or that, you know, they're not going to be able to put those in. I mean, the post office is not the government anymore. So I think the town could tell them, no, we don't want that.
Well, I don't know whether they could or couldn't, but I agree with you. I've been trying to appeal it.
John, they, they have those, you know, boxes that chest to cap at the front.
Yeah, and they have a number of places. I, I, without having thought about it, let's go back to basics. All the government agencies are in this town. They're probably the biggest volume users. Then they're the businesses, and then they're the residents. That's a lot of makeup, that's a lot of boxes to serve, so.
Do we know why they chose that location over Dr. Martin's?
Well, I know what they've, what they've said, and I sent that email, they, what they're hanging their hat on, you know, they're making, you know, they're professions, they know what they're doing. I, you know, we're not objective. They are hanging their hat on, the grade drops as that building goes. And it was going to be awkward or too expensive for them to deal with that grade issue. Then they have a lot of burden to do about safety and customer happiness and a lot of stuff. I would point out, the obvious, that grade has been there for the last year while they've been looking at this alternative. So it's not as if that was a new thing, if they just discovered. Nowhere along the way did they say that building was a habit.
Is there any way the town, if people feel strongly about wanting to keep the post office, that we could take legal action and try to get an injunction?
Well, here's the problem, here's the problem. And in a way, here's some good news. That building will now be ran out to health department. Health department has been looking for space for some number of years. And they have been negotiating with Jerry Martin for quite some time. And when I made reference earlier to Jerry being good to sort of holding it out, the entertaining the post office option. But once that's gone, I mean, now it is gone, he will be presumably signing a lease very soon. So the good news is the health department stays in the town, which is, that's good news. To your point, if we were to undertake any kind of effort to turn this thing around, whatever that might be, we have the problem that we've lost our good alternative unless we can figure out another alternative, which frankly, to date, we haven't been able to do anyways. Do we take some course of action? For myself, I'm just, let's sort of wait and see a little bit and things up. I think it's good news, Tori.
If the location...
I'm not sure that accomplishes anything.
If the location that they're trying to move to doesn't work out, for instance, traffic issue, big trucks pulling around in the school early in the morning when the school's open and kids are trying to get in there, there could be issues, other issues. So if it didn't work out, then I guess they would be on the hunt for another spot.
What I find interesting in this process, and we're so focused on is they're going to stay in the town or not, they decided it's not. They've decided it's not going to stay in town, and it's going to go to this property. In this process, at no point do they talk to anybody, such as the sheriff's office or the school system, or the public at large, about that alternative. And, um, already, there's some people who are not happy about that.
Well, when they...
Who thought maybe they should have been asked some government types of...
Right, when they presented here, there was not really an opportunity to come up with those specific issues, because they didn't have that in mind, they didn't have that property in mind.
Well, I will say, we pointed out to them the issues of traffic. We pointed out to them that they should consider how feasible, from a safety standpoint, all these trucks are talking about going in and out, using that thing. They are the professions.
Mr. Mayor, can I? I just offer this for everyone's consideration, but back in, I mentioned this, a number of meetings back, and Culpeper had a similar situation a number of years ago, and they're going to move the post office from town court out to one of the shopping centers, one of the big buildings out there. And there was a real outcry among everyone in town. French Slaughter was in the House of Representatives at the time, became very instrumental in taking on the cause, and they ended up buying the lay of the department store building down town, to the town court and present location. And, you know, they've taken steps to sign leases and all sorts of things for the location. And I'm not sure exactly what happened, but they abandoned that and came back to the town location.
The only other thing that I recall, and it may have been an informal conversation with the representative, who said that they would prefer not to have the building built. You hear they are having a building built.
Why do you remember that?
It just, a lot of this seems, I guess the best word I could use, the most generous word is disingenuous. I could use a lot of other words besides that, but I'll just stick with that one.
I would not disagree with you. So, our, to the question that was asked, are we going to do anything? And I guess I'd put it in the category that some of us are thinking about, and what one might do. Wouldn't do anything that we all wanted to do. But at the end of the day, we don't have, to get into this town, we need an alternative. And at this point, the best alternative that we have, at least in our judgment, the best alternative, is now essentially taken off the table. And, so...
Well, since they're willing to build on this and that, the next alternative would be that piece of property where the lock's on, unless that's...
That's a, that's a very good thought. I mean, there is the alternative, we find property and somebody builds on it.
The blackout or one?
Um, the blackout.
That's another spot.
Well, as a property we don't control, and I'm, I'm skeptical about making owners want to do it. Anyway, it's not, I mean, it's sort of over, but it's not, I'm not quite ready to give Old Business. Task Force Committee Updates, meeting updates.
I, you've already received a report from the Housing Task Force. We have some recommendations from the Tourism Task Force and from the Business Development Task Force, going alphabetically. Deb, would you like to?
Deb's not here.
Drew, would you like to speak to this?
To the Tourism Task Force?
Yes. Well, to the Business Development, is there anybody here to speak to the Business Development Task Force recommendations?
Well, we, I think we speak to it. Deborah Harris is the chairman, and she couldn't be here tonight, but Caroline and Deborah and I are on the Business Development Task Force. We've met four or five times, and we have presented to the Town Council tonight our recommendations, and I can, they're, if the public is interested, Laura said that we could, she would email them.
Well, it says on here, not distribution. So, where's...
So, that's, the survey probably was not for distribution.
No, it says recommendations of Business Task Development Task Force, not for distribution. So, I don't know. All right, so, the recommendations are, are supposed to be available to the public because they were, all the sessions that we had, the task force sessions, were in public, so all of this information is a public record. And the public is welcome to have copies of it. But among the recommendations are, to review and distribute a survey that was developed by the Business Task Force with input from the Tourism Task Force, and survey, send the survey to town residents, businesses, and commercial property owners to assess the current business land state and determine, among other things, the types of businesses they would like in town, and that would be useful. There are probably twenty-some recommendations here, I'll just hit upon some of them. Re-engage with owners of vacant commercial properties to see if they're interested in opening a business there. Create a Chamber of Commerce, or ask a regional chamber to start a little chapter. Enhance the town website and use of social media. Install more prominent Welcome to Washington, Virginia signs on the way into town. Create a Town Washington Business Welcome Pact. Examine opportunities for marketing the town, the county, and so on. So, there's a whole bunch of them. Then we also, the survey, we have a copy of some of the questions that we would like to ask people. And this is all for Town Council review, but I'm, I'm not sure what the process is after tonight and after you all read this. What happens next?
Well, there's also, reading the introductory, one of the most important things that I see as a recommendation from the Business Development Task Force is to set up an economic or business development officer, appoint a person or group to oversee business development. And I could see that that group could continue the efforts of the Business Development Task Force and continue carrying out these things and prioritize these and get the feedback from the survey, and so on and so forth. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, and I think there was some question about whether we did it with the Tourism Group, but the idea of a standing committee in some way to keep retaining a business opportunities going forward.
And then possibly provide some kind of staff support.
Yes, sir.
I want to go back to just the business about distribution. It appears, I mean, they're putting not the distribution, I'm not sure who that is, but I don't know. But it strikes me that's not what we wanted to pretend that. The, the, there's hardly any secret about what's in this, this document, so I would...
Does it call or email the...
Unless I'm stepping on someone's...
I believe it was, it was thought that the survey was something the Town Council would take a look at before the public would, would receive that survey information. I thought that was...
Because there's too many hands.
And that's why, I think Deb put that on, is not realizing that this was...
Let's put this way, if I may, that's just, Laura, let's make sure we just do this one page. And if anybody else wants to look at the survey, they want to often do, but it's like, you know, how many people, you can have too many people playing ahead of you.
So, that's the Business Development Task Force, and so, should the Town Council go back to this task force and ask them to begin making a recommendation, or they've made a recommendation of this group, do they want to enlist themselves and enlist people to serve on this kind of standing committee, or do they want the town to publicize for a committee, or how, how does the Business Development Task Force want to start on this?
Well, I think we thought it would be good to have a member of the Town Council on it, a member of the Planning Commission, and others, but I think the idea of soliciting membership publicly would be very important.
It sounds like in order that the Town Council doesn't go off without fully understanding the desires of the task force, is it possible that the task force could have one, I would say, mini-meeting to, to put down specifically, because you've mentioned a member of the town, what they would recommend, and then give it to the Town Council, and the Town Council gives it to you, Mr. Mayor, and then go ahead and take action with that?
Sure.
Because I think this is, this great stuff in here, and I really want to thank the Business Development Task Force for all their good work on here, and I just want to make sure that it continues on.
And I think Deb Harris has done a magnificent job, and she, I think, just thought we were going to not get into it in great depth at this meeting, but do it at the next meeting when we could really, she wanted to...
Yeah.
And she wanted to be a part of that.
Yes, she should do. But let's, let's just have conversations, not in this meeting, but publicly, well, just what, we want this brought back up at the next meeting, questions. This committee's got to be precisely what we're...
Put it on the agenda for next, for October, and get into it more better.
And then what, what do you all see that the Standing Committee, or whatever we call this, ongoing group, what it should look like? The recommendations would be appreciated. Towns, one question.
Is it appropriate for the public?
Sure.
Mike, I've heard several different recommendations, all of which sounded very interesting, but I wonder if the task force, its next meeting prior to the council meeting, could also prioritize those, so the council has a real kind of hit this about, do this first, do this second? You're thinking there's going to be much deeper than any of the rest of us, and the chance to see that, those priorities, and maybe discuss it with the next meeting would be wrong.
That's great.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor, there's also a report from the Tourism Task Force. And is that you?
I'm, uh, husband wife, you're here.
It's a scroll town.
It is. It'll be one of many stories with that for the rest of our life. The, our, our recommendations overlap in a lot of ways with the Business Development Task Force. We feel that someone representing the tourism interests of the town should also probably serve with this group, however it's established. In addition to those recommendations, one of our primary was also the survey that Mary Ann mentioned, a way of getting a lot of foundational data from business owners and citizens in the town about sort of their perception of business development issues, but also the town brand, which was in the conference of plan, is something that we really wanted to, to work toward with the community. So, in addition to that, one of our recommendations, and we have everything from sort of low-hanging fruit, social media, sort of stuff that should be easy enough to tackle, to seeking out professional assistance with, you know, brand consultation, that sort of thing. So, that's, that's essentially what we have, along with a few other recommendations.
There's also a report, thank you very much. Is there anything else from Tourism? I want to thank the members, if I may. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the members for all the work that they did on this, doing that a lot. We have at least one more report from the Finance Administration.
Yes, thank you. The Administrative, Administration and Finance Committee has met, Task Force has met twice. We've had really productive meetings, I think we'll all agree there. The most important conclusion that we've come to is we're putting everything on hold until the final recommendations from the other task forces all come in together for review, because we can't come to you and say, "This is what we recommend," without seeing what the other task forces will come to you for, which may need financing.
Particularly with reference to infrastructure.
Yes, specifically infrastructure.
Yes, that's really the big one.
Which I'm now on the committee, Task Force, sorry, call the committee. Nancy's secretary, Brad's on the road. Our next meeting is on Monday, September 24th, at 5:00 PM, prior to the Planning Commission meeting, just shooting.
So, why don't you provide the...
Let me just mention one thing that's a point of interest, since we're talking about buildings and this and that. Some of you know, in particular, Alan Combs, the county has a building committee, which has Ron Frazier and John Lizinski on it as county representatives, Gary Curry, and then some volunteers, the purpose of which committee is to try to figure out what are the needs of the county government, what buildings are available for use, what's the best use of those buildings, and they have, let me stop. And I've been asked to join that committee, which I'm going to do, or have done, actually, because I think it's to tremendous interest, to state the obvious, to the town, as to where the various government offices and employees are, whether you'd not want to see them go somewhere. So, I'm going to be on that, on that committee. My sanity was questioned by somebody, but I'm going to do it. And I believe that Mr. Frazier will be appointing somebody, and maybe some other people. First, not the first, the next meeting is in a week or so. I reference Alan Combs, because Alan Combs and Case have been working on this committee for the last year or so, as they've examined the needs of all the various office buildings, government buildings in town. But they've stepped off of it. Okay, that's under Old Business. And I apologize for making you all work as we go through all, sit there as we go on through all this stuff, so, yeah. Discussion, possible authorization of public hearing on Eaton slash Eagle Gay Street vacation I think we know what that means. John, you want to talk about where we stand on that, or you and Mike have been talking, was there any update on that?
I was looking at the application further, thinking about things further. We originally discussed the possibility of having an pre-able by a beat out of Frazier, had that figure come back to council. And the more I thought about it...
And the more I thought about it, I thought that that might be really inappropriate, because the money spent on the appraiser comes back and the figure's not satisfactory to the town, there's no, nothing to go forward on. It seemed to me that the more logical or appropriate approach would be to have the folks that wish the substrate abandoned to make a proposal to the council, put a dollar figure on it, and state their other terms, so council can take a look at it and decide whether they wish to move forward, and can offer, just what the situation is, so there's really no additional fees for these, professional fees for the appraisal, until we see whether the council is interested, what's proposed. The other thing in Mike's letter, one of the public benefits, we mentioned, and council's heard about this from time to time, and that's the condition of the building, this, the front of the Eagle lot and its residence. And I think that are a problem to scum, some things like that are a problem to people in the area, and it stated that that would be improved and taken care of. And it was my thought that that should really be stated specifically, and if it's going to be a public benefit that council's going to rely upon, Ms. Eagle should not only state it specifically, but give the timeframe in which it could be accomplished, and that would be a condition of the transfer of council or interested in pursuing the entire transfer back. So those are two things that occurred to me, I mentioned it to Mike, and I think he's talked with his clients and asked for further reaction to those thoughts.
Yes, since, since we were asked before town council, I submitted some supplemental information to John. I don't know if you all have it before earlier package, I think you probably do. It was designed to flesh out some of the questions, the initial questions that had come up at least more earlier town council meeting, and attempt to supply council members with a, first off, with a depiction graphically of exactly what we were talking about in terms of the abandonment of the, of the Gay Street, the stub, stub street. We had also mentioned in earlier council sessions that there'd been discussions with Ms. Leftwood, she's the owner of the property that sort of surrounds Ms. Eagle's property on the west side of the extension, about granting her a private right of way so that she wouldn't be cut off from access to the back of her lot. And in the materials that we submitted, we now have a draft of that actual document that the council can review and consider. I did get into my letter in more detail about what we perceive to be the public benefit to the town in terms of an abandonment. One of those is, as John mentioned, the, at least the hypothetical opportunity to Ms. Eagle to, to improve and enhance her small lot that is there at the corner of the property. That's been the subject that's come up before council and the ARB many times over the last probably thirty or forty years. It's still, I would say, hypothetical as to what exactly Ms. Eagle would be able to do with that property, because it would still require decisions by the council and the ARB, zoning administrator perhaps, in terms of variances and so forth. But I think Ms. Eagle has some, some thoughts in that regard, and what we, the, the process is not a monolithic one, it's one that should be a back and forth. Therefore, we don't have any firm proposal to give to the town council, other than to say, that's definitely, we think, one of the firm, one of the public benefits, and Ms. Eagle can speak to that, or Mike can speak to that more than she can. There's also the matter of the appraisal. What I, what I discovered in, in, in average over the summer, contacting a B.D. appraiser, was that they were really hard to come by in this area. The, I contacted several on the B.D. approval list for the Culpeper District, which, which Rapid Avenue, County of Washington is in, and couldn't get interest, anyone, any of them interested in, in the appraisal process. And I let John know that, and then, you know, after more thought, the idea was, well, let's, you know, let's maybe just have it. The, the area that's involved in this vacation request, abandonment request, is roughly thirty-eight hundred square feet, that's, that's my rough calculation, we now have a survey. And it certainly seems appropriate to be considering a purchase price of $2 a square, seventy-six hundred dollars. The, again, the enhancement value is questionable to either the properties, but to the extent that it, it clears up the strip in front of Mr. Eadman's property in perpetuity, and to the extent that it may afford Ms. Eagle the opportunity to make some improvements and enhancements to her property, there is obviously some value there. And at the same time, the public comfort will be increased by that, and benefit in that respect. So I vote with Labor, my, my calling more, I definitely want to have Ms. Eagle or Mr. Eadman's feet. Really, the point where we are in this process is simply to ask town council to, to consider moving the matter forward. Again, we, we feel like there's no detriment in the council agreeing to at least schedule a public hearing, open it up for a public discussion, hear what the other members of the town have to say, and, and at that point, make a, make a further decision about whether to consider it more, or whether it's not something that you want to consider. Thank you. Do you all want to, any of you want to, I mean, you can talk some here, you can talk later, do you want to say anything now?
I know the answer to that, but somebody came by after the last meeting and looked at the property, could see that the extension of Gay Street, which used to go to Community Street, was abandoned some years ago, which was the Hodges property, now the Hodgins property. And where it ends now, it drops, you know, so much, it'd be virtually impossible to ever consider putting a road in the future part of that. It went back, so the, I don't know. I think Mary Ann and Fred came by and took a look and saw the huge drop on the property at that time, which has been one of the reasons that we've given when the other part of Gay Street was abandoned.
But let me offer a framework for thinking about this, or helping thinking about it. It seems to me the first question is if we were to give up that street, that stub street, which is not even a street, would the town be foreclosing, this is just what you were talking, any option some years down the road where we wished we had the stub street?
The town has a domain, the town can make that decision.
And, and as, and, you know, we talked about some last year, in the last issue, the last meeting. And as you just pointed out, it's hard to see how it ever did an option to use that, given it drops a number of feet, it does, and especially goes on somebody's house.
Yes, goes for a front yard house on this house.
But it's a conceptual matter, it seems to me, we, if we go ahead with this, we are saying that we do not see that there's likely to be some real use for that, that five years from now, and I said, yeah, I wish we had a chance. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't, I don't see what that is. I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm prepared to say that's not an issue, or it's, it's an issue, but it's a way to answer it. The second is I do think the town should get something for, which you've just been discussing, and whether that is financial or some non-financial benefit, or both, or giving away or transferring something of that sort, I think that we should, so. So it comes down to, and you all have just been addressing this. You've made a financial suggestion. I myself am keenly interested in, to me, there is real value to the town in that rundown, dilapidated, charming, questionable, historic building, that something, I'll come back to. The status quo is not good. Building's been robbing for twenty years, it's dangerous, there's this and that. So anything that changes that situation in a positive direction would be as valuable in some immeasurable way to the town, to the neighborhood. Mr., Ms. Nancy.
So I don't want to comment on the, on the pros and cons of this particular application, I haven't, sorry, I haven't read it, but I want to stand back a little bit, and we raised this at the last meeting, and ask if we, as a town, should have a policy on stub streets? And with a policy on stub streets, where are we on eminent domain, and where are we on restitution or compensation? We could then move ahead to look at, with a framework, to look at all our stub streets, we have many stub streets. We have a town that was supposedly laid out by George Washington, we're talking about changing that in some ways. It would seem to me you need a policy rather than doing all these in an ad hoc manner. And I think it could be done in a fairly quick way, to put down the principles, public interest, whatever, has to meet a certain standard, and then around that, we can begin to get a briefing in which we deal with all these subjects. I'm personally uncomfortable with this ad hoc approach, that we, we kind of look at, look at it in a very pieced-up fashion.
To quite an interest, and I may be wrong, although anyone else correct me. There are four remaining stub streets in the town. One is the one that we're talking about, which, which has served, I don't remember something, um, somebody's car. The second is the stub street, which I believe is Coward, that's right there, Coward, that runs that way between the Bantams and the Bottles, which I gather, I believe in some dispute, out various things here, but that's a, that's a stub street that runs in the town. There's the end of Gay Street, going this way, that is a stub going up to Ray Pooch's property. Small bit of history, that stub street used to go in front of Ray Pooch's cabin, and at some period in time, years ago, got transferred. There is Porter Street, which is a stub that runs into our driveway. I think those are the only.
How about the other end of Wheeler Street?
I just said Wheeler Street, where Mr. Bass lives, behind.
Correct, I'm sorry, I actually had, you're right, we were going in the.
West side.
Which is currently a driveway. The other, the other stub streets, over time, have transferred into the county, or to the end, or, or number else.
But my point is, you've just articulated a series of principles, some kind of public interest, some kind of compensation, some kind of ability to reverse, or if perhaps eminent domain, but why don't we just put them on a piece of paper, rather than deal with this each time in a, in a different manner?
Simply provide a, a question. Expand on that, what with, why, Mr. Comp, let's go back, can you hand raise your, uh...
Firstly, I certainly encourage what Carolina said, I think that finding a policy that deals with all stub streets, you know, these kinds of issues, I would add that the Planning Commission, with consent or with consultation with the ARB, would probably be the place to develop that policy, for several reasons. One is, you're kind of messing with the original flat, which we make a lot of noise about in terms of our history, and we should have some policy on how that is maintained or not maintained within this National Register Historic District. The second thing is a different point, one, I was glad to hear the zoning administrator say that the condition of that chat is something of a public concern, because the zoning administrator is indeed the enforcer of the rules on demolition by neglect, and there are that building and others that need to be addressed, perhaps before the town is even addressing what, you know, to do with the stub street. And finally, because the ARB, that is a contributing building in the National Register Historic District, so questionable or not in terms of its history, it is formally a contributing building, period, under the law, if you will, certainly under federal laws. Because of that, any development of that building would either, A, have to go through the whole demolition process that's specified in the ARB regs, and/or approval of a new design by the ARB before any work could commence. And if the town wants to make a decision about a stub street based on the hope that something like that might happen someday, that seems a bit tenuous. With all due respect to the friends I have who were involved in this thing, but I think the town, at least I have some surety that this is what could happen there, and that's part of the reason we know the town's going to benefit, and therefore we make this decision. But again, I defer back to Carolina about the need for a process.
First is a question of the town council. If a policy is required for the hearing, would it be treated like an ordinance?
It would be in the nature of a resolution.
So it could be done about?
It's just a policy.
John, I'm sorry.
It would be in the nature of a resolution that's adopted by council, wouldn't require legally advertised public hearing. A set of policies, and policies are sort of general.
That would be my, my sense, in which case it might be appropriate for council to specifically request or delegate to the Planning Commission to bring forth the draft, a such resolution to your next meeting. That would be in front of you, if you decide to go forward with this specific case. But I agree that, given the number of those remaining stubs, you can give the fact that it is part of the sort of town, probably warrants having a stated policy that you could follow, in this case, and in the future.
John, do you have, have you seen policies such as this, that you could refer to right away, or no?
I want to make sure that these, the chair of the Planning Commission, considering the two members of the Planning Commission have already expressed an interest in this topic, the, I would say, the chair of the Planning Commission, we would be happy to begin addressing this at our next meeting. I can't guarantee that we would come up with a resolution, but we would try to do it as quickly as possible. That's my comment as chair of the Planning Commission. As a member of the town council, I really had four comments. One, I guess I'd want a little bit more clarity in the letters, two, why it is that Mrs. Eagle is unable to build, what is, and I use the term in quotes, problematic, what does that mean regarding the setbacks regarding the rest of it? I'm not, I'm not asking for an answer.
No, I'm just asking you to repeat that.
Sure. So in the letter that was written, it said that one of the issues was that... So, in a letter that was written, it said that one of the issues was that there were problems or that was problematic regarding, you were unable to build because it was problematic regarding setbacks.
No. You remember the building permit I got in 1992 and why that, I didn't build?
No, ma'am, I'm just talking about, I don't have it, I'm sorry, I didn't put it specifically in here.
In that case, I want to say that the town of Little Washington pulled my permit.
I'm not telling you necessarily about that. Says furthermore, this is.
I have been trying to do something with that property for over thirty years.
And I know, and what I'm trying to do is not oppose, what I'm trying to do is get some clarity as to what are some of the setback problems that you referred to or Mike, Mr. Brown refers to. It says furthermore, compliance with the zoning ordinance, setback requirements for the lot is problematic in its current configuration. So I guess I'm asking, it would be helpful to have a little more clarity as to what those.
Well, I was told that the grandfather clause covered me rebuilding it on the foundation, on the footprint.
And that's fine, but I guess what I'm asking, I guess I'm asking, since you, Mike, did you, you authored the letter, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So I guess I'm asking just what are some of the problematic issues in its current configuration? I'm hearing that you had a grandfather to be on the current footprint, but you're talking about there are some problems with setbacks and things like that. Again, I'm not asking for the details at this moment, but that is a question that I have.
Right, I understand that, and it's a fair question, and Mrs. Eagles is really just trying to hear you.
Right, okay. Well, I've never been known to have a quiet voice, so, but I'm glad to have you next in.
I wish you all would have mine, so turn along.
The second thing, and I will be very honest with you, I have been supportive of aspects of this. I can confirm that there is indeed a drop off. I did have a chance to review the property, and there is a drop off at the end of the street. However, I was very concerned by the last sentence in that same paragraph. It says, "By enlarging the equal property with the land within the Gay Street extension, there will be a greater likelihood that improvements could occur." I need to have more surety than a greater likelihood that something's going to happen. I think there is a sentiment that is had, whether through no fault of your own, but that barn maybe.
Well, I'm ready to submit plans, elevations, floor plans for what I want to build there. But the last time I tried this, there were many, many, many hurdles that the town council had to go through.
Right, well, I guess what I'm saying is you've got some property, it sounds like you have some neighbors with them, you were working, and that there may be some kind of creative solution to, I don't know what that solution is, but there may be a creative solution to try to assure that we can get that barn either removed or changed or something. I think that's very important in this whole process, and I guess that's the point that I'm trying to get across.
Well, that's kind of in your lap, because I can, I'm ready to submit what I want to build there, but you have to tell me if somehow or another it can happen.
The more that you are able to follow the constructs that are set up in the zoning, the more likely it is that the town council will be able to approve. The unique character of that space, I understand makes it difficult now. With the new additional property that you would have, it has been very clear that you said that would facilitate being able to do something. I guess what I'm saying is I would like something more than a greater likelihood that it's going to happen. I'd like to have more surety, and it may mean that in order to get past some of the constructs, that you may have to work with your neighbors to figure out a creative way so that you do get closer to the setbacks that you need to have and so on and so forth. For instance, I notice in the street, it looks like they're splitting the street down the middle all the way back.
Yes, you're talking about the stub street.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's another creative way that you might be able to do that so that it gives you a little bit more property around the building to allow you not to have to worry about a town council having to give you variances for setbacks.
Well, I do all the little footage around the footprint. I own three feet on the west side, six feet on the north side, and if I get half of the stub street, I'll be fifteen feet on the east side.
Yes, ma'am. All I'm saying is that there are two pieces of language in this. One that you're talking about that's problematic with currently as it's set up, and I appreciate that, and I'm asking that there be some clarity as to what that means. And second, that if there is a greater surety, and that might be attained by being able to find some creative solutions with this additional property. Those are the two points I'm trying to make. So, I'm not trying to say make it a lot more difficult, I'm trying to figure out a way.
I can only think of one thing I need that have the stub street for. If I built a house there, and that would be for the sewer thing that you all put up in everybody's backyard.
Right.
And I would have room for that if I got half of the stub street.
Okay, well, maybe that's.
That's the only thing I would need the extra land for.
Well, again, maybe that's the clarity that we need to know.
And then I might want to bury a propane tank in the fifteen acres too. That's all over me.
Yes, ma'am. As I said, you've told me this.
Satisfying?
No, ma'am, it doesn't satisfy me, because I hadn't done me verbally what I'd like to have is.
Will we get Mike on it?
Yeah, I think we're. And the final point that I would make is, I think I haven't done it as eloquently as Alan and Caroline have said, but I think that the policies that I'm saying are good because I do worry about pressing it. And I worry about us giving away stub streets without having a way to draw out a policy ahead of time.
What's wrong with you having your, I'm just figuring out, how many square feet there is, such that people want to run?
There isn't a problem with that. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about three other issues, not the pricing issue. Do you want me to go over those three issues again?
No.
I have a question. Mike, are the new owners of the Hodgson property to the compliments, have they evolved in this?
Mr. Eaton, if you could speak to that. I've been by that house twice and I don't think they have a phone number for it. They don't answer here, so it must be a local phone number, but.
I'll call today, they answered it.
What?
They answered it today.
Okay, well, I'll hold it in.
Maybe we'll ask them.
Okay, then we'll be involved in it.
So you're reaching out to them?
Yes, absolutely, sure.
Mr. Brown, if I could speak to one thing that's come up this evening, which is new, and that is the idea, I don't want to draw this out much longer, but that's the idea that there should be some policy statement or a list of principles that the town council adopts. And my concern about that, and I'm intending no disrespect to the people who spoke in favor of that, is that each of these decisions, I think, is intrinsically lineage specific to the, to the specific stub street itself. Every one of those stub streets that you mentioned earlier this evening has very unique characteristics to it. The properties that surround or are at the end of that stub street have unique situations. And I think it would be very difficult for the planning commission or the PAC to develop a set of policy guidelines or principles to try and somehow govern how all of those are going to be addressed. I think in their very nature, each one of those has specific questions, specific concerns that the public is wanting to speak to. I mean, that's the whole point, it seems to me, of the procedure that's already given to us by the Code of Virginia, which is that the town council notices for a public hearing and permit the members of the public, and certainly those that are most interested in that specific area, but the members of the public, in a more general sense, if they feel that this has a larger impact on the town, to come and speak to that, to that issue. That's not to say that the town, I'm not suggesting, and that's not to say that the town council can't take that route and adopt or attempt to adopt some overarching guideline for these kinds of applications, but I would submit that's, that that's going to be an extremely difficult exercise, much, I think, much more difficult than what, maybe what the first perception is, is because every one of those stubs, and I think if the council went back and looked at the history of when some of the others were abandoned, you can see that every one of those is very case specific. And that's why I would encourage the town council to move forward with the application that passed before. Schedule this for a public hearing, entertain all of these and more comments in the document and use the process that we already have in the code.
Let me turn this back to you, Caroline. When you talk about policy, give me an example of what you've got. I understand policy in the sense that, as I outlined earlier, you're foregoing something that might be a value down the road once you consider it. I understand a policy, if that's right, or this one is asking you what I mean, the town should get something for it, be it dollars or progress. There may be two or three other, you know, relatives, neighbors things, I mean, there's a few, but is that what you're talking about?
I think, I think words of policy or some principles, and John would, but I don't mind you. You, very specifically, this meeting and the one before, where this did come up before, already articulated, there must be public interest there, there must perhaps be some kind of compensation. One could think of others, and I don't think principles are in any way inimical to the idea that each property is going to be a little different. Of course, you're going to have to drill down, but with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, you've articulated those principles, but one day there might be a mayor who didn't care about public interest or didn't care about these things. And I think we need to step down, this is our footprint, it's been there for a long time. I'm not opposed necessarily to reaching some deal on stub streets, but to do it in a ad hoc way where administrations change, just seems this lends itself to the kind of principles that you've already articulated. And I think the planning commission should be given that. It took me about maybe a month, months of time, and I'm not opposed to all that going to a public hearing. I err on the side of transparency, and public hearing is good, but I just think it's not as if we have that much footprint in our historic district to play with. And administrations come and go, let's let the community decide the principles.
If I can add to, I see the need for a consistent process, almost like if you had a series of checks, a checklist of things. Did you look at this? 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 And so on and so forth. And I think that continuity going from one administration to the next administration to the third is very helpful, would be helpful in this process. And so I agree very much with what Caroline has to say.
And maybe we leave up to Mr. Bennett to decide what the nominee for sure is of what we're talking about.
If you view this as something that is absolutely binding on future councils, then drafting it as an ordinance and adopting it as an ordinance would be the way to go. Resolutions can come and go completely.
I'm not sure it has to be an ordinance, I think it has to put down a mark on it. But again, who's opposed to you?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I was just, on this topic of the public hearing, in my mind, there's two different types. You're advertising as agenda item and have to be very, and ask the public comment, but to get to the legal public hearing, there's got to be a specific set of facts on the table that are proposed and the council is going to adopt or not adopt. We're not at that point yet. In my mind, I think there's a lot of energy for the proposition that Mrs. Eagle has to put something down on paper that's going to be legally enforceable in the future and a timeframe for doing it, if nothing else, just to secure the structure so the problems that are experienced now by the neighbors are eradicated. And that can be done without all these variances and rebuilding the entire structure. So, in my mind, there's not enough support council at this point to say this is the key final proposal and put it out, put the legally required public hearing before anything is done. If it doesn't require a public hearing, if you're not going to proceed, but if you have a mind that you may be proceeding, then you have to have this legal advertised public hearing.
I don't know if this is helpful, but whenever you especially for it, and in some other cases, you take a roll call vote where the town council says, how do you answer this question? How do you answer this question? Parking, encumbrance on neighbors. All it means is that you thought through each of those specific checks, and that as a council, you have found in favor of whatever's being requested. Each one of those cases that you've approved it is unique. I agree with Mr. Brown. None of these would be like any other. Each one is going to be very fact specific and unique. On the other hand, there are principles that govern whether or not your plan is in the public interest, which is ultimately what you have to decide to legislature. And these questions help structure your answers to make sure that you did think about the three, the five, the eight considerations that would be pertinent in abandoning a piece of the historic fabric. So I don't think it is all that challenging. You came up with three, Mr. Mayor, right? There may be five, I'm trying to sit here thinking.
I'm sure, but one of the other ones, right? That's.
Certainly something about the, I mean, we don't have to review the map, but they're there, they're not hidden, and it wouldn't have to be totally comprehensive, but I'll bet you you could get five questions that you'd have to, before you could approve, you need vacation or abandonment of town property, you would have a consideration, and come to a majority of the forum that says yes, it's in the town, it's in peace, it's in the public interest to approve this petition. I think that's the way that both these concerns get addressed. You wouldn't want to forestall doing the public good in a specific case because the general rule didn't fit. On the other hand, there's no reason you couldn't have a guideline or framework or checklist someone said, where you just make sure each time that these questions have been considered. Mr. Brown has given you several specific points tonight. I know in his mind, he thinks it's a checklist, it's not published, but he's working off one. Your question suggests you've got a checklist that you're working off of, and I think all the suggestion of a policy would be let's all see them, not us, let's all of you see them and say, yes, these are our policies, then go forward and do business. I think there is an implicit set of guidelines being framed after tonight's kind of presentation.
I think there are. Fred, so, there's a number of pieces, this whole thing, but is this something that the next planning commission, you all think you might be able to?
Yes.
Someone else do that?
I'll state that the next plan.
Twenty-fourth, I believe.
And I would encourage.
Does it have to be a formal recommendation to the planning commission, John?
Um.
No.
There could be a referral.
I'm just asking.
There could be a referral, and ask for a recommendation, or ask for, or ask for the drafting of a policy, or in my mind, if you want to be really binding, draft a proposed ordinance.
I'm not sure we're interested.
I'm not sure we're interested in going through that process. I think just, the vehicle would be, I would just like to have, again, let's keep the language simple, a checklist or something like that. If that requires a resolution, and that's the simplest way to do it, I don't know if there would be a simpler way. But really, what we're talking about is a protocol or a process that the town council would go through whenever someone would approach them. And this would be the benefit for the applicants, as well as for the members of the town council.
I would encourage my colleagues here, or anyone in the public for that matter, if you have suggestions as to what these principles might be, or would be, to send them to the threat or to all of us, but if, you know, we've already got three or four. So like, what are the next X number? And any thoughts that people have on that, I think people are sharing before the next planning commission meeting in person, or if one can show up to the meeting and share them, in terms of.
We love the company.
I have another concern, though, I know this is going on, which Mr. Cock raised, and I'm, say the sympathetic, let's say. There is the question, hey, you may raise me, but there is the question as to can that building be torn down? What's processed? ARB involved or not? You don't want to hear what he says anyway, so. But Alan raised it, and as Alan, I say this with great affection, often does, he has suggestions of what needs to be done, and I'm listening to them, I think, well, it'll take two years to get done. And, but that's kind of an open question as to the status of that old building, and ARB does have its regulations.
So the ARB, the ARB, what?
The Architectural Review Board.
There's the issue, as I know, if you have a really old building that's collapsing, and not in good shape, which it clearly is. Is it a building that can be saved? Or is it a building that one goes through a rather lengthy process to kind of prove that there's no particular alternative? And that's actually a lengthy process. So I'm not sure how to, myself, how to deal with that situation. To me, it's a building not to save. One man's opinion, one person's opinion.
It's a building for what?
That's not sable.
It's an old apple shed that the farmer who owned the land back in the twenties, before the two houses, Dorothy's house and Lacy's house, was built.
No, it was built after they were built, because the Hawkins' house and the Wayland's house next to it were there before the apple shed was built, because Mr. Wayland says he remembers it being built.
About the same time.
Close to the late twenties.
The late twenties. The farmer who had that unusual little rectangle held on to it because there was an apple shed there. And the roof is built, the structure of the roof and the material dates the structure's been built. And it's built pretty well inside, and it was.
It's old chessboard.
Not actually falling over, but here's one of the. Yes, it is, but anyway. If the building is, one of the constraints about taking a building down is when a building is built on the footprint, sometimes you have to keep the old structure in place, or half of it. So that would prohibit, you know, that would prohibit it from being, to enabling someone to build something there if the structure didn't take it down.
Not necessarily, because I just did a building like that, where I kept the building built in eighteen eighties and took down something built later attached to it.
And you left part of it there.
Yeah, I had to do two foundations.
But so similarly, the same thing could be, could have to be required here. Also, I would like to just hope that before it's taken down, there's some kind of historical survey done on, just for the, because it's on a historical block in a historical town. And it has its own lot, which it has some kind of, you know, as a lot of places do, has a historical survey attached to it.
We can't find surveillance.
It's not, there isn't one yet.
I'm sorry.
We couldn't find the survey done on that. When Sheriff Shatter did the surveys, it's not available. So we may need to have. It may have no value also when you, you know, in the process, when it has some kind of history attached to it. As ever, the town should have history attached.
Well, was the survey done?
I do not know. It's not on the list, the list in the book, and it's not. So I'm assuming for whatever reason, there should be a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, I don't know if this is the right time to determine a discussion if the motion exists, secondly, but I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission, the town council empower the planning commission to review and come up with a process or a checklist of issues to consider, the town council to consider when addressing requests to vacate a substrate.
And this for you, that you can't, Chris?
Yeah. Someone asked me to repeat it.
I got it. But I just want to know, does that have to be a roll call, could it just be a?
Yes, it's a roll call.
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
And he's, and he's coming to the next mayor.
I think, so we're ready, great. Trying to keep moving this thing forward, some kind of conclusion. I think we still need some, my RV is, I know where you're going.
What?
I said, I think I understand where you're going and what you want to do. I need more specifics where you're going to go. I just don't want to get tangled up in all this sort of historic. I want to understand better any of the historic issues that we might have, and so we can deal. And we can't hear something, if any, for this area. Why aren't we talking?
Well, I've got a picture of my little bit there to indicate that.
Sure. Sure.
Actually, it could be some needed fights.
Yeah, but it's helpful for people, I'm not a, for.
Oh, sure, we do, and it's forty-five by, something like twenty-two.
Thirty-two, should I agree this far?
Please.
And where, where the apple shed is, or?
Twenty what?
Where the old apple shed is.
Yes, over the, over.
What?
Over the footprint.
It's plus eleven. Forty-five by twenty-two, that would be the foundation.
Oh, that's the foundation.
And that would be the dimensions of the little house. Be one and a half stories. Probably Gordon Batten, a painted dark brown, so people, it looks like a shed.
Yeah, it's, it's facing the shed, if I toss in a few old things.
So this is what I'm going to, I think it has to be a different.
Well.
I mean, that's John Bennett.
I wouldn't.
Did you have any, is this your only cap?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I don't know if you've talked to Nate about it, are you trying this? Okay. So the question is about whether there's going to be a public hearing, are we going to put that table, that session, wait till we get more clarity, and schedule it?
I would say that there are two things. One, I would like to have a little clarity on the questions that I raised. Second is, I think, next week, next month, if the planning commission is able to do its job, you will be able to have a checklist in which to work, to be able to move at that point, barring anything with a historical preservation or landlord. At that point, Ben might be able to go to a public meeting there.
So then, would we table that?
For sure. So that would mean that you would be able to, might be able to have a public, might be able to have a public meeting by November, the November meeting. Five to one, quick don't rise, considering the weather.
Oh, I'm going to do this, I have this so.
Yeah, I know. It is frustrating, I understand.
I think the ARB question is really.
Anything else on that subject, or have you done?
I do have a question, Catherine just said that, the word ARB. Has this gone before the ARB, before it came to the town council? Because it is contributing structure.
We don't know.
Oh, we don't know yet, got it, okay.
Sure, hold on, this subject or another subject?
This subject. I was just wondering about the historical sites in Miami, information on. Is that the down, the check? Okay, yeah.
Good question.
The down?
It's good, it's.
We need to.
All right. I think we've done this subject, unless anyone can translate. And I believe, as I said, I'll go to the public forum, right? Let me open a public forum for any discussion on this subject, what's up? Henry's going to end up now, yes.
Excuse me. I have a couple of questions. I read the, this afternoon, I read the proposed ordinance.
Propose what?
Ordinance, the PUD ordinance, I'm talking about.
They haven't even seen it yet.
Well, I have a copy of something, well, what is this, sort of looked like an issue statement rather than an ordinance? Did it say draft on it?
Draft.
Yes, it did.
That's what the joint planning commission and task force approved to be sent out to be reviewed by the consultants, probably, without seeing it, I can't say that. But it had a draft on it, that was the PUD ordinance. That was the final preliminary draft, and it was going to go out to the consultants for their comments. Council has not seen that yet.
Oh, is it?
So the plan is for that to come back.
I don't know, I just.
The decision made at that meeting was that after the three consultants look at it, their comments will go back to the planning commission. The planning commission at its next meeting, which is twenty-fourth of September, which is a public meeting, will review those comments, make a decision whether or not that, if there's anything to go forward or not. The hope is that those comments from the consultants can be consolidated in time, that the planning commission could, if it decides, forward it for the council's consideration at its next meeting. So that's probably what you were looking at.
I see, I understand that. So what you're saying is a draft, you looked at by experts, planning experts, that will advise you if it's a good ordinance or not.
Yes.
The only thing that, having read it, I've said this again, it doesn't read like an ordinance. It reads more like a, you know, it's too vague, from my point of view. Talk about, you have to have open spaces, but it's not really spelled out, you know.
It's not, it's not really, it's not.
Oh, okay.
Something else to give that cheer and rise.
It's certainly not done.
The other question I have is about, having lived outside towns for forty years or so, I find that you do not enlist aid from people outside the towns, at further your point of view. And by that, I mean, you state a remark about, we, and I don't know who we are, pointed out that the traffic at Schoolhouse Road would be really not a very good thing for the school. And I'm wondering if you tried to enlist the PTO of the elementary school, and tried to enlist them as advocates for not putting this thing there, that it was a danger to the kids, that sixteen runners would be running up and down the road there, that kids go to high school games and all that from that road. And if you had reached out to that kind of group to support you and say, no, no, it can't go here.
Well, I have to answer your question, I have reached out to Shannon Brimsby on the subject.
Excuse me?
I have reached out to Shannon Brimsby on the subject.
Right.
And the sheriff has also been reached out to.
How does it feel to parent teachers?
Parenting teachers as a child.
Oh, yeah. Henry, your point, your preference, there has not yet been reaching out in a big way to a number of people in the public as to educating us that this building is going, or is intended to go there, what the issues are. You will have to find an article in the Rattan News picture this week, which addresses some of these issues, I believe.
The only reason I ask that, one related point, is that having gone through the bicep, and saw what public opinion can do, and once it's organized, and how you can bring the, you know, general populace to help you, you know, if they have an issue. And that's why I was asking about it, because I saw at that meeting where a lot of people who really did have a stake in this thing, still, you know, they're going on their side.
Well, I'm not sure I heard everything there, Henry, but I. I think it's important for the residents of this county to know where the location is intended to be, and for them to look at the various issues that might be involved in there. I think there's some question, at least in my mind, as to the degree to which the town who lost in this particular thing, wants to, actively, one might want to be trying to sort of negative about the whole subject. So there's sort of a, I want the citizens of the county to think hard about what the implications are of it going there. I guess we could be helpful in that way, but I think, I don't know, I just feel uncomfortable with.
feel uncomfortable with, just to what extent the town really should be doing so, myself. Anything else? All right, if not, on a close to public forum, a motion to adjourn?
Is that heard?
Yes. Take your, take your choice. Stick with it.